Matt Donaldson, could you please do the invocation today? And I'll ask Councilwoman Angie Reyes English to do the pledge of allegiance, please.
Okay, shall we bow our heads? Dear gracious heavenly father, we are very thankful that we have made it to this meeting today, very thankful that we have our health. Lord, I ask you to bless our city, our police department, our chief, our fire department, our mayor, and our city council, and all the residents and businesses in Hawthorne. Bless us and keep us, and keep us in your hands. In your name we pray, Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Can I acknowledge there are veterans, anyone here in our audience that are veterans? Thank you for your service. You face the flag, place your hand over your heart, repeat after me. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
The roll call, please.
Councilmember Montero. Councilmember Patterson.
Here.
Councilmember Reyes English.
Here.
Mayor Protem Manning.
Here.
Mayor Vargas.
Here.
Councilmember Reyes English has a presentation. Go ahead.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. If I could invite our telehealth director, I should say CEO, Rambo, Dion Rambo, to come to the front to give us a presentation on telehealth. If you remember, some years ago, we brought telehealth to address our mental health, behavioral health services in Hawthorne, but we've also made some amendments so that they're now also included in our homeless outreach efforts. Welcome, Dion.
Thank you, thank you very much. Nice to see everyone, glad to see everyone. Did you all receive a copy of this? And we can start by, Von, do you have a video, Von? That two-minute video? Yes, do I have it? Okay. So what I did was, this was obviously our final year. My request is to ask for another year, that maybe we can land this whole thing that we've been doing for a year. I have some good data that I've... Should I just speak without the mayor? Is it okay?
Sure.
Okay.
It's fine.
So I'm gonna play this video first. It's only about a minute or so long, but it gives you an idea of what we've been doing for the last few months. Most of these things and faces you're familiar with. I'll play it here. Everybody, Rambo here. When you guys at the city of Hawthorne ask the telehealth van... If not, no worries. I'll just play it and walk you through it verbally to not waste too much time. Okay, so I'll just walk through this. So what you're looking at now is... Rambo, one of our vans. You can see the outside of the window there. We park at local, you know, this is an example of at your community center. All playing a part of mental health throughout your city, especially from Dulce. Where you're gonna see here, her leadership is kind of guiding us, even helping us as a company, work better, that we're able to take it throughout the whole county and save everyone. This is Dulce. The coffee Mondays that are happening. She just, I had each person just kind of represent. That's an inside of the example when they have their private therapy sessions. This is a very popular one, which is outside, so when we park at DMVs or restaurants or different things like that, wherever their group is, she sends us to. They could simply walk up to the van itself. This is one of our drivers. We tend to hire those who are formerly homeless or formerly incarcerated. We bring them in. I'm gonna kind of speed this up, so I can be able to answer questions and things like that with the paper.
To hold things in, you know, and not be able to communicate your feelings to other people because you're afraid of...
It dives into the bridge of hope, of course. We spend a lot of time building some of our therapists, and it looks like we're inside.
And when I experienced therapy for myself, I felt so much lighter that day.
This is, you're gonna see what Chris has to say about working with... This is Chris thanking us. We sponsor, we take a lot of the profit and proceeds that we make from the telehealth van, we put it back into a lot of your units, for example. We donate the projection system and everything to your Bridge of Hope. We fund their entire movie night, things like that, along with the coffee Mondays. We tend to, when they need television sets or things like that, we sponsor it and do it. It's not something we want back, it's just something, oh, and of course, you guys know, I think one of the reasons our vendors have... Oh, this right here, if you've noticed, this place right here, if you want. This is a newly added location. This is one of your women who are... Forgot who this is. This is off of... Reese? Yes, Patterson, that's Patterson. But we're there every day. This is the director of that location, but we deal with, I think Patterson has about 20 women? 21, I think. So we're there once or twice every single week with the women who are there. Because they meet with the therapist, you guys actually provide for them, they're able to kind of get out of there and meet their other kids. Because they can do a therapeutic time. Here, you see, we have to incorporate this at your hotel, the new bingo, something that we do every Friday. We would have a hard time with them coming out, meeting the therapists, which was costing money, obviously, so we do the bingo every single Friday, listen. They get $5 just for coming out, sitting at the table. They just do one game, they all give $5 as a donation. And then, of course, every single win. This is, of course, you see, Ralph's cards, still very popular. And that's pretty much it. They get, you know, every five or six visits, they give a stamp, get the free Ralph's grocery stores gift cards. And that's why our numbers are doing pretty well with the homeless population and keeping them safe. So going into the presentation, going into the presentation, I'll kind of glance over it real quick and just point out a few things, but I'll be open for any questions or any things that you feel like we should improve on or explain. But ultimately, I was trying to break it down just based on just standard data information in terms of the demographics, things that the mayor was saying was important, the demographics. I even broke it down in this case to the types of services that they were asking for. So if you wanted us to make any tweaks on that, obviously, the curious visitor number went down than the year before. The session distribution is pretty much the same, but now we're parked at locations versus before, we were doing hopping, the hopping, the hopping. Now, we're just where Dulce goes, so we have the four main locations. The next page, you will see the number, percentage of the sessions that we're doing. You will see the weekly service schedule, that Monday through Friday, showing exactly where we're parked, unless it's an emergency. And I added this extra piece at the very back, that you see highlighted, said special data impact. That I thought was important, because I felt like saying we're doing it is one thing, but showing the impact of what we are doing is something else. So it shows how many people we kept out from going to local clinics, from calling 911. And we got the data and information from local fire buddies of mine, that's how they kind of collect their data. So we show what the reduction was from an economics standpoint, from a people's serve standpoint, and the de-escalation was a big thing, because the telehealth vans are called when people are having a hard time in their homes, dealing with unraveling something, the directors or something would call us. And then being able to talk to a therapist created a lot of de-escalation, and hopefully created a lot less 911 calls from your city. So let me open it up for any questions, and sorry, I had to pour so much out in a short period of time.
To the chair. Thank you, Mayor. Rambo, telehealth has been very instrumental in our city. We all know that, we see that. Councilmember Montero, myself, we just did the ribbon-cutting ceremony of our Bridge of Hope housing, that has been housing individuals, but more importantly, giving them permanent housing. The wraparound services are important, which Doris has demonstrated along with yourself in the visual that we're seeing today, the presentation, that she needs help with rides, right? That was something that we didn't anticipate. We anticipated just them coming to the intake center, being given a referral, and then they go figure it out, right? But the quickest process that has been able to show results, quicker results, is that you're there to get them to their destination, wherever that might be.
Long Beach.
Right? Through a referral to another shelter, because, you know, we can't house them all. We've provided Bridge of Hope housing for a period of time, and I think we're gonna have to eventually start looking at that, to see if we could extend that, but, you know, we all know that comes with dollars. But your numbers have increased quite a bit. I know that was something initially that we kind of thought that that would happen, but because we pulled you into the homeless outreach, that's why the numbers have increased, right?
Yeah, and we're at, they're creating therapy sessions versus before, when we were just sitting in front of City Hall, etc. Now, they have to see their therapist to get their kids back, you know, like at Patterson's or the Bridge of Hope, right? They have to see their therapy sessions to, for intake purposes or things like that, so yeah.
Right. No, I appreciate that. Councilmember Montero?
Thank you, Ms. English. Mr. Rambo, thank you very much for coming tonight. Actually, yes, I'm very impressed, because you brought us numbers. I know statistics actually don't lie, right? So, thank you very much, because this is something that is very helpful for us when it comes to make decisions, to possibility to fund you for another year. Because mental health is important, special for the homeless. And for us to be able to have that service at the location, at where the people are, is very essential. So I have to say that thank you very much again, because it shows, you know, all these 900 sessions of mental health therapy, it's very important. And especially for us, of our residents at the Bridge Hope, we want to make sure that they got the service that they need, so they can become self-sufficient. Because when they take care of their mental health, their physical health, and then we gave them a place to stay, and then what we want them to do is to get a job. And for them to get a job, they have to be fit mentally and physically. So it's very important for them to transition from the Bridge Home to the permanent house with a job. And that is where we partner with so many people, like you, like the South Bay Web, to make sure that these individuals become productive citizens. So I have to say thank you very much, and my hat goes off to you.
Thank you very much. Another point, too, is we're, now we are resourceful for even Dulce. So we're incorporating, for example, she needs eye support. So we're working with visual aid type of doctors, etc., who can incorporate into this telehealth van system, you know, without extending the contracts for them to be a part of, because a lot of people aren't getting their licenses in DMV because of the vision. So we're trying to plug them into resources that we have, so they can use the vans, so they can qualify for vision support.
And I have to tell you, thank you again for partnering with the behavioral health service, because that was one of the things that I told you, make sure you contact behavioral health service, because they do have, you know, women's shelter, they have the men's...
The men's have been asking us, right?
Yeah, at the Pacifica House. So I'm glad to see that you've been doing those connections, so thank you.
Of course, you're welcome, thank you.
Thank you, Dion. Let me just also say, not just for your telehealth services and everything that you've implemented, but your community giving. It's shown, and it's received, and we thank you greatly for everything that you're doing and have been doing for us with regards to mental health, behavioral health, and now homeless outreach services. So thank you.
Thank you all for giving us a chance, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Rambo. Thanks for being here. I'm putting this together. Wonderful. Okay, so... Okay, I'm gonna ask the members of the American Lung Association to come up. Do you have anybody else with you, or you'd like to just be there by yourself?
The two of us.
Yeah, okay, thanks for coming back. We wanted to highlight you once more, and we want to honor you today. I know you mentioned your services yesterday, and how you got together with the city and offered services. Can you expand on that, or maybe repeat some of it from last time, please?
Sure, yeah. So for those who are not familiar with the American Lung Association, we actually just celebrated our 120th year this month. And so we, our mission is to save lives by preventing lung disease, and we do that through education, advocacy, and research. And so if you do have any lung health issues, I'll be in the back, so you can come see me, or you can go to our website, lung.org. We have a lot of free services. We have a lung helpline, so if you want to talk to like a respiratory therapist, or if you want to quit smoking, if your kid just got asthma, we have just a range of lung health services online, and a lot of them are free. We have free resources for school, like an alternative to suspension when students get caught vaping. So yeah, anything lung health related, you can come to us.
Awesome. Can you tell me, can you tell us about the incidence of lung cancer, of how the cigarette smoke and vaping and all these things are affecting our community?
Sure, yeah. Actually, tobacco use is still the number one cause of preventable death in the United States, which is kind of surprising, because it seems like we've done a really good job at getting people to stop smoking. But also, it's not just people who are smoking, it's secondhand smoke is still a big issue. Especially, one thing that we're focused on right now is secondhand smoke in apartment buildings. Someone in one of our other communities, you know, her neighbor smokes, and so she has to go to the emergency room in the middle of the night. So even though a lot less people are smoking, it is still a big issue.
Can you, can you mention whatever you could share about vaping and chewing tobacco?
Yeah, so vaping, I think the industry did a really good job of marketing it, like it's this healthy alternative, or, you know, of course, they did all the flavors and made it really appealing to youth, making it look like candy, and, you know, some students I've spoken with, they get DMs online, asking if they want to buy it, so it can be really easy for them to access. But vaping actually has a lot of the same issues as smoking. It has a higher concentration of nicotine, which is really alarming. One puff bar, which is pretty common, has as much nicotine as 50 cigarettes. And so I think a lot of times when young people, even as young as elementary school, are smoking this, they don't realize how much nicotine is, are in the products. And for young people especially, nicotine can change the way that their brain develops. So smoking this much nicotine this young can change their brain for the rest of their lives. And the flavors themselves are really harmful. One specific chemical called dicetol, which is actually used to flavor buttered popcorn. It's safe to ingest, but when inhaled, it causes irreversible lung damage. And it can be, at one point, it was in up to 75% of vaping products. I think they're starting to take it out, but yeah, there's a lot of chemicals and toxins and carcinogens in these products, and they're...
Chewing tobacco?
Oh, chewing tobacco, I think is, it's still common, it's less common. The thing that we're talking about a lot now is called ZYN, I think, or ZINE. And it's just a little pouch that looks like a Tic Tac, and you just put it in your mouth, and it's just nicotine, so they're saying, oh, it's healthy, because it's just this clean little pouch. But of course, it's still a lot of nicotine, and then it causes erosion in your gums. But that's the hot, new thing that we're talking a lot about now.
Thank you. You're definitely a resource for our community, keeping us safe, mentioning things we have to safeguard ourselves from, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
I asked you to come back, because we have something special to give you.
Great.
And I wanted to read this to you. This is a proclamation on behalf of the city, the city council, and myself. It's a proclamation honoring the American Lung Association. Whereas the second week in May is turquoise takeover week, designating May 8th through the 14th, already passed, right? It was turquoise takeover week, and about every two and a half minutes, a person in the US is diagnosed with lung cancer. And lung cancer is the leading cause of cancer deaths for women and men. Wow. And lung cancer screening saves lives, and advocacy and increased awareness will result in more high-risk individuals getting screened and protected. Public support for research funding will result in new treatments and better methods of early detection. And Lung Force is a national initiative led by the American Lung Association to defeat lung cancer and encourage all residents of Hawthorne to learn more about lung cancer risk factors. And therefore, the Hawthorne City Council takes great pleasure in offering formal recognition and acknowledgement to the turquoise takeover week, and honoring the American Lung Association. It's signed by myself and my council city colleagues. Mayor Protem Katrina Manning, Councilmember Alex Montero, Councilmember Patterson, David Patterson, and Councilmember Angie Reyes English. Let's give them a big round of applause.
To the chair. Thank you for coming back. It's good to see you again. Thank you again for your presentation. It's good to know that you included in your presentation some other concerns with regards to living in apartments and folks smoking in adjacent rooms, and how that is hurtful to your neighbor. I wish that folks could understand how important that is to take it outdoors or somewhere that you're not hurting maybe others, including infants and babies. I understand that greatly. And then you mentioned the tobacco use with regards to the new thing that they're doing. In Idaho, they're still spitting it out and looking like cowboys. So, you know, I get what you're saying. It's, everybody has a choice, right? In spite of how deadly it could be, and how it could rotten your teeth and your gums, it's a habit, and oftentimes, habits are hard to break. But at least we could bring the awareness to the community and the people, and more importantly, know that the city of Hawthorne supports the American Lung Association and all that you're doing. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you again for coming, and I have to tell you, you know, my mom never smoked one cigarette in her life, but my dad used to be a smoker, and my mom died of lung cancer.
Oh my gosh, I'm sorry.
Okay, even, believe me, I blame my dad for her death, and I didn't spoke to my dad for 15 years because of that. But that is what, you know, like myself, I'm allergic to tobacco smoke, you know, the thing drive me crazy. So thank you for everything you guys do, because like I said, people don't understand, you know, secondhand smoke, it is a killer. So thank you for your education and awareness, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Let's go take a picture. Thank you, guys. Let's go take a picture. All right, hey, you guys, I almost forgot. Let me pull this out of my pocket here. Let me, let me take this off of my keychain. What did you say? No, no. Let me try to disconnect this, you know, these, uh, this little. I got your, I got you a key for the city. We got you a key for the city. We don't pull this out for just anybody. So this gives you full access to every room in here. You can go in and open doors and poke around, so. Let's give a big round of applause for. Yeah, 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 yeah. Thank you, guys. Awesome. So we got a lot of good, we have a lot of good things happening in the city. A lot of good services, a lot of good people helping out, protecting our residents and helping our, the quality of life of our residents increase even further. For our third presentation, I will defer to City Attorney Kim.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, the, Mr. Jared, who was going to do the presentation, had a conflict in his schedule. So the presentation will be delayed to the next meeting, which will be on June 25th.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember David Patterson, please proceed with item four.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is Nikki Nguyen here? Nikki, come on up. So we have Nikki Nguyen with Education First Nonprofit. Coming to give a little bit of information about our organization and extend an invitation to the city.
Great. Thank you for the opportunity to talk with you all today. I think presentation is up here? Okay, great. Hi, I think I got it. Is that right? Okay, perfect. So again, thank you for the opportunity to talk about our organization called Education First. So I am the regional director for the LA chapter for this nonprofit organization. But we have eight chapters across the US. And our mission is really to provide need-based scholarships to exceptional seniors who attend high schools, typically with historically low percentage of college applicants. We really focus on the students that have the strength of character, the commitment for learning and a vision for their future. And we really want to invest in these individuals because we believe that they're going to positively impact their communities. So again, as I mentioned, you know, our organization is unique because we don't focus on the straight A student. We actually want the student who's overcome significant obstacles and hardship. And has the grit and the ability to, you know, really overcome these to pursue their career and education and life goals. So as I mentioned before, we are a national organization. In LA, we currently partner with three different high schools, Garfield, Jefferson, and Manuel Arts. We have a national network of volunteers. And so again, if there is interest, we're always looking for volunteers. There's no shortage of high school students to help. And there are a lot of different activities to get on board with. But what does this mean to you, the city of Hawthorne? And this is kind of where I'd love to hear from you all about where we can potentially work together. As I've mentioned, we have three high schools that we currently partner with in LA. And there is a great opportunity here potentially to partner with your city to understand what are the specific needs in the city of Hawthorne as it pertains to your high school students, particularly those that are, you know, overcoming or trying to overcome significant obstacles. And so, you know, been diving into a little bit about your local school district. And I know, for instance, in Sentinel, Sentinel Valley Union High School District, there are three goals that really are aligned to Education First mission, which is to prepare students for college careers and life. But as we know, again, if you look at these statistics, there are some students that need extra help. 65% are socio-economically disadvantaged. 2%, you know, are foster or homeless youth. So again, you know, maybe there's an opportunity here to really impact the youth here in this city. Just to provide you an example of the types of students that we, you know, help through this organization. We've selected our scholars for this year, both of them from Garfield High School. Gil Padilla Hernandez, you know, has always had a love of building. From when he was a child, he, he loved playing with Legos. But he overcame significant challenge of housing insecurity. And now is pursuing a career in mechanical engineering and wants to set his sights on college and has selected UC Santa Cruz. Lucio Sanchez Morales, also at Garfield, also experienced significant personal challenges. Too personal, I think, to share in this forum. But suffice to say, when I heard his story, I nearly cried. I have a two-year-old and I cannot imagine the hardship that he went through. I would not want to put that in anybody's mind. He resolved to never give up and his self-motivation pushed him to excel in school and extracurricular activities. And he's definitely passionate about helping others who are struggling and wants to give back to the community. He wants to major in business administration and start his own business in cosmetics and skincare. And it's just really great, again, to be part of an organization that can really impact youth that have so much potential and just need help to get to where they need to go. We are raising, or we have a fundraiser here in Hawthorne coming up in two weeks. And we'd love for you all to be part of that fundraiser with us. Again, as I mentioned, we want to build a partnership with you all. We are having this fundraiser to raise money for our 2025 scholarships. But beyond that, we see this as an opportunity to build a long-term partnership with the city of Hawthorne. We're really reaching out to include local high school students as well as local businesses so that high school students can hear from business owners and entrepreneurs on future, potential future career pathways. Many of them want to start their own business. It's also an opportunity for local businesses to showcase their business and services as well. And it's an opportunity for our organization to hear from you all as to what we should focus on to help empower and support our local youth. And all while having fun and supporting a great cause. And so our ask of you is to please attend our event. Spread the word for any other local businesses that we think would like to perhaps provide some mentorship or guidance to local high school students. Any high school students looking for a career guidance and mentorship. And anyone who may be aligned to our cause. And also, we'd love to hear feedback. You know, what are issues that are facing your local high schools and students that should be on our radar? And just to be aware, I do have a conversation with the Sentinel Valley School Superintendent as well to have additional discussions around future ideas for partnership and how to address some of the challenges specifically facing this local school district. So thank you again for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Any comments? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I, I, go ahead.
Go ahead. Councilmember Montero first, please.
Uh, thank you, Matt, for coming here tonight. Yeah, it is, sounds pretty good. Because, you know, last week, actually, I gave five scholarships to Sentinel Valley. And also to the Hawthorne Math and Science Academy. Because, you know. So scholarship is very important. And especially for students that come from the low-income socio-economically, right? It's very important for them to have a hand, especially with the college increasing every year, the tuition and the room and board. So they need all the help. So it's definitely something that I would say, for us, we welcome you because we know, you know, Hawthorne is a low-income community. So there is a lot of students that would benefit for, for your program. So I'm looking forward maybe to partnering with you also. Because like I said, you know, through my nonprofits, we give scholarships every year to the students. So it will be a good fit to partner with you. Thank you.
Great, great.
To the chair.
Yes.
Thank you for your presentation. Good to have you here, especially when it comes to our students, our young women and men looking for, you know, not just a college education, but more importantly, how to be mentor and find what fits for them, right? I know there's students that don't feel college. We were just talking about that today, a matter of fact. That there are some students that, you know, are already tired out of, you know, 12 years of, of school, high school, junior high, et cetera. And for them to say, you know, I, I commit to a four-year degree, right? That's sometimes overwhelming for, for some. And especially for those that are low-income and need a mentor to help them along. My neighbor that I brought here not too long ago just had a discussion with me two days ago and said that she's having a hard time just sitting with her counselor so that her counselor could help her on her next phase of preparing for college. You know, what, what credits does she need? Does she, is she short on credits? What, what applications should be, should she be looking over? What type of references does she need? The counselor is not at school. And so it hurts her because when she wants to meet with the counselor, the counselor's not there. So when you have that type of engagement or not, it's discouraging for the student, right?
Right.
And so I promised her that I would get her to someone to help her find the answers that she needs so that she could start early for her college application and try to vet what college she's looking at going. I know she talked about Stanford, Stanford in Oakland. Her father and mother was there standing next to me saying, we don't want her to leave California, which I get that too. But if you could just understand some of the, some of the discussions that we have with family. So it's perfect timing that you're here today. I also want to get you connected with our Business Connect, which is an organization that we implemented here in our city so that businesses can have a fast track in business here in our city of Hawthorne that are having maybe things that they need to get implemented to, to get their business off the, the ground running. Or maybe those that have already have been here for years and they just want to be able to circle back to see what's available for them, right? So Business Connect can maybe help you with regards to reaching the business community to see if any businesses would be wanting to partner with you. So those types of things are important. I'd be willing to entertain a donation for your organization, Vaughn. And, you know, we could go from there. But thank you so much for just coming out and providing this information to us. And the two young men, it's my hope that they could fulfill their dream and get what they need. And we'd like to see you come back and give us some updates on maybe some Hawthorne students and how you help them. Rambo, right behind you, is a really good person to connect with. Rambo's with the county, he's with the city, he's everywhere. And I think that would be a great discussion for you to have when there's time available for that. Okay, all right.
That would be great, yes, thank you. And I think you touched on another note, which is sometimes, yes, the scholarships help, but there's the additional coaching. And our organization does that as well. Because, you know, money can only get you so far, right? You need the additional support. And, and sometimes those counselors aren't available. And so we have that also available as well as part of our scholarship.
Yeah, no, thank you. And just finishing real quick, the young lady that I brought here needed a letter from me to help her get to Washington DC. And she was asking me, since I've been mentoring her for a couple of years now, if I would do a letter so that she could be selected out of a number of students to be able to go to, to, excuse me, to Washington DC and learn government. Just, you know, and I'm happy to report that she was one selected. So she's going to be going to Washington DC. Yeah. So thank you. It's important. Thank you.
It is, it is very important.
And your event's going to be on June 23rd?
23rd.
23rd at 12 o'clock at the Common Space. Thank you.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Thank you for being here. Human Resources Director Erica Lampkin will give our final presentation. Ms. Lampkin, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem, remaining council members. Tonight, I'm going to present to you the Good Neighbor Award nominees for May. Is Kimberly here? Kimberly, can you please stand? Not Kimberly, Kimberly Duran of the Police Department. Kimberly Duran is nominated for a Good Neighbor Award because she is an invaluable member of the Hawthorne Police Department since July 2027, or excuse me, July 2017, serving as a police records tech. Kimberly consistently displays an exceptional work ethic and a positive attitude that sets a high standard for her colleagues. Her efficiency and dedication to her job are evident day in and day out, making her an indispensable asset to the department. Recently, Kimberly has gone above and beyond by taking on additional responsibilities. She has demonstrated her capabilities by successfully testing for and being chosen as an analytical component to a local task force. This showcases her commitment to excellence and willingness to take on challenges. Kimberly's outstanding work ethic, enthusiasm, and contributions to the team make her a deserving candidate of the Good Neighbor Award. She truly embodies the spirit of a good neighbor and a dedicated professional. Congratulations, Kimberly, for being a nominee. Is Adrian here? Adrian could not make it. Adrian is Adrian Gerardo. He is of the Equipment Division in the Public Works Department. Adrian is a very hard worker. He always keeps a positive attitude, demeanor, and shows consistent effort and performs his tasks successfully. A situation occurred when master mechanic was out on a family emergency and a coworker was out sick. Adrian was faced with the inspection and repairs of a few police cars that had been involved in a pursuit. He was able to perform the needed repairs to the affected cars and also kept the daily services going. He is good at planning and performing under pressure. Adrian is very dependable and he is always willing to go the extra mile to keep the city's fleet division in the best shape. Adrian has a positive attitude, he is hardworking, and goes above and beyond. And he always does this with a smile on his face. Congratulations, Adrian. Obviously, the city, the committee always has a difficult time selecting the Good Neighbor Awards. So they are both winners tonight. Congratulations. Kimberly, you can come get your certificate and take a picture with the council members?
All right, let's go.
Thank you. Oral communications, please.
Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, all remarks should be addressed to the City Council as a body and not to any individual council member. During oral communications, speakers shall have three minutes to state their business. The Brown Act prohibits the City Council from providing a detailed response or acting upon any items not contained on the agenda. The governing bodies as a body shall have the discretion at the close of oral communications to refer any remarks to the City Manager for study, investigation, report, and/or recommendation.
Christina Prado, Fair Housing Foundation, Christina Prado.
All right, good evening, everyone. Hello, Mayor and council members. It's good to see you all again. We were out on Earth Day tabling for Fair Housing Foundation and it was such a lovely event to be able to see all of the city come out for it. So I wanted to come in front of the council today to promote our services at Fair Housing Foundation. Looks like it's a good day to come out because there's a lot of good people in this room. So if anybody wanted to connect afterwards also, I'm available for that and I'll be leaving some brochures. But at the Fair Housing Foundation, our mission statement is that we are dedicated to eliminating discrimination in housing and promoting access to housing choices for everyone. So the state, and so there's federal protections for fair housing, including like race, religion, you know, having children in the household, and then additional protections under the state of California. So as an organization, we're able to investigate that discrimination that might be happening in our communities. And then also, we're able to give education on landlord and tenant rights and responsibilities. So that's everywhere from, you know, how high rent increase can be, how to respond to notices, even just to help folks who are living with disabilities and requesting accommodations or modifications. Whether that's because, you know, they have asthma attacks because of, you know, a neighbor might be smoking or, you know, they're allergic to, you know, something in the carpet and they need help in requesting these accommodations or modifications. We'd be able to help assist them. We also have a rental counseling program to help anyone who's looking to improve their financial health. They're able to work one-on-one with someone and they'd be able to come up with a budgeting plan, improve credit scores, to essentially help them maintain their housing. We also do educational workshops for anyone who wants to learn more about the protections there are for fair housing or even our services or what rights and responsibilities there are for landlords and tenants. So I will leave some brochures, I think, in the table outside. So if anybody wants to connect further afterwards, we're available for that as well. And thank you all for your time and I wish you all a great rest of your evening.
Thank you, ma'am, for being a very important resource. We get hit up a lot over here on the dais for resources of this type. Sometimes we as a city can't really get in the middle of a dispute. So we really appreciate you guys. Let's make sure our Housing Department and our City Manager's Office gets some of those. Because they'll be referring people to you, like, for sure. Haley Hutt, Assemblywoman Tina McKinner's office.
Yeah, they're already here too. They do the outreach here.
Good evening. I want to introduce myself. My name is Haley with Assemblymember Tina McKinner's office. Thank you to the council for having us today. I am here to introduce a very special member in our office. We have a new senior field rep. So I came to bring her to the council today for her to introduce herself. So when you don't see me in the community and you might see her, you know, she's a familiar face and she comes with great, great intention and with a great member behind her. So I want to allow her to introduce herself.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Laquisha Bryant. It's a pleasure to be here with you all this evening and I'm looking forward to serving the community of Hawthorne. So I will leave my contact information so you can contact me and I look forward to working for you all. Thank you.
Thank you and good luck. We're looking forward to working with you.
Thank you. I also want to make just another announcement. I know we're getting into summer and I just want to remind everybody to be safe, have safe street safety with our students out in the community, making sure we are paying attention on the roads and just making sure our students are staying safe. I also want to bring to everyone's awareness that we will be having our annual backpack event this summer. We'll be having it on August 17th. It is a little early to have that date, but I wanted to get it in everyone's ear now so that when it becomes time for back to school, everybody is not scrounging around looking for backpack giveaways. You know, Assemblymember Tina McKinner will be having one on August 17th. I will come back with a flyer to leave with the council and come back again with another announcement closer to that time.
Do you know where that's going to be?
Yes, it's going to be at the Crenshaw and Imperial Shopping Center. It'll be August 17th from 10:00 to 1:00 PM, I believe. I can verify that on the time once we get closer to that event.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Pat Donaldson?
To the chair. When you come back, can you bring some of the bills that McKinner has passed? Because I was interested in AB 2797.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
If any bills that the member is championing this session and even last session, they can be found on her website. If you go on to the state website, it is under legislation. Her entire bill package is there. And if there's anything that calls for like support letters and such like that, all of those examples can be found on that page as well. I can share that with you via email, so you have a direct link to that. But I will also bring the one pager that we do have as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Pat Donaldson, Hawthorne Chamber of Commerce.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Patricia Donaldson, President of the Hawthorne Chamber of Commerce. We have events scheduled for the rest of the year. So that's one thing I don't think we've ever done. June 20th is going to be our mixer at the chamber. It's going to be bingo night. Someone's going to win $100, someone's going to win $50, and someone's going to win $25. And that's from 5:30 to 7:30 at the Hawthorne Chamber. July, we're having our first fireworks stand ever for the Hawthorne Chamber. So I hope that everyone can come and visit us. August, we're giving out backpacks at Corn Blume Elementary School that we do every year on August 29th. So I hope that some of you can donate things to put inside the backpacks. And then September 30th, we're having our golf tournament. It's our 10th annual golf tournament at Rio Hondo. And it's an all-day event. And I'm thanking everyone in advance, the ones that have already said that they would be there. And then October, we're going to have a masquerade Halloween luncheon for October. November is our Thanksgiving giveaway for turkeys and groceries. December is our Christmas mixer, a Christmas mixer that I don't have a date yet on. And then for our Christmas party for toys, turkeys, and groceries. And then in January, I don't know if some of you watch on TV The Barbecue Masters. We're going to have that. And we're going to have it hopefully at the Memorial Center. So that will be a $300 gift, a $200 gift, and a $100 gift for the best barbecue. And I think some of you are going to be judges, chief. You'll be one of them. And the mayor will be one of them. And the city manager hopefully will be one of them. So that will be in January. And then one more thing is that Mo Edwala had surgery. So he said to ask that everyone pray for him. That's why he's not here tonight. So thank you very much and I will be announcing this at the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody wishing to address the City Council, form a line? We need to get an idea how many people are going to be addressing the City Council. Okay, we got two. We got two, go ahead.
Hi, good evening. Ruben Tenshitz, I'm with the North Hawthorne Community Association. I'm here because we have some concerns on 1/20th in regards of the calibration of the lights. First of all, the lights look great, the new lights, they're doing very great. The only thing is that it's been a while that the calibrations, they have like the backup all the way up to aviation. That's how bad it gets in the evening or in the afternoon. So if somebody can look into that, really appreciate it. The other thing I wanted to speak, I didn't even know I was going to talk on this in regards of the telehealth ban. I don't know, I know there's some data that came about. Not sure what it was, it wasn't really said a lot. I think it was about 900 people or something like that. I don't know, the data that a lot of the neighbors are asking is like, how much are the telehealth getting paid every year? To our understanding, it's like half a million. So they've been here, correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor, like since 2021. That's a lot of money for 900 people. Not only that, it's a referral system. And that's what I'm saying, you guys need to be clear, transparent on what's really going on. Because the people that do live in that area say that there's really no one there. So we're spending like millions of dollars on the service that is really not even required. You know, so. And that's the other thing that a lot of these neighbors are talking about. That right now, what we're doing, we're creating a lot of amenities for the vagrants or what you call homeless or so. And we're having a lot of issues, especially around the Imperial area, for the same reason. They're out of state. From those 900, how many of those are even from Hawthorne? These are the questions that need to be asked. These are the questions that, these are the concerns that the neighbors have. This is what we should be looking into. It's not just to bring people in, give them millions of dollars just because it's a good cause. We need to really look into it, be transparent about it, and we're going to continue to be asking more questions. Any nonprofit that's coming in here, we're going to ask questions. We're going to shed light. We're going to see who belongs to it, how much is being spent. And who knows, we might create another small group in regards to check this out. Because we need to know where all this funding is going, especially this year. All you guys have to be open and just be honest with us. That's all we're requesting, just some honesty and transparency. But $500,000 a year since 2021? You know? Couldn't that money be used for maybe our media department? Or is there a media department? Our code enforcement? Our elderly people here? You know? Couldn't that money be used for something else? Instead of some van being parked right there, just what, just giving out flyers to whomever shows up? No, we need to start paying attention. And like I'm saying, this is a concern not only from North Hawthorne, but throughout the city. All right, so thank you very much. Have a blessed night.
Next speaker.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I've come today to share some information and also ask some support for an event that Holly Park Neighborhood Association is looking to support in Holly Park. So again, first off, my name is Ryan Richard, President, Holly Park Neighborhood Association. And for the past two weekends, I've got the pleasure to go to Ladera Park and witness a play, Much to Do About Nothing. We're having a resident of Holly Park. Born and raised there, graduate of Yale's MFA program, is doing free theater that he's bringing to Ladera Park. He's also done it in Allegiant Park. Is looking to bring that program back home. His idea with this is called the Theater Truck. So they run out of the Echo Plex, but right now what they're doing is they bring free theater to low-income communities. So the idea is to make theater more accessible for those people in our communities. So what he is looking to do is to be able to run this play either for three weekends or five days, however we are able to make it happen. I'd love to be able to have the city support this event to allow our residents the opportunity to get some culture right here in Hawthorne. We've seen, they've been able to do it in small spaces, large spaces, whatever we have available, the things that they're able to make this work. So I'd love to see if this is something that interests the council and to actually have the director and the two directors come, specifically the one that lives here in Hawthorne, to come out, give you a full presentation about what their nonprofit looks like, how they're doing this. They've been really instrumental in working with high school students. So a lot of their actors, you go and see, half of the cast is in high school. Two of them are just in college and there's a few that are more established, long-term actors. So we're looking at a program that we also be able to bring our Hawthorne students to be a part of so we can do our part to kind of support the arts here in the city of Hawthorne. So I just wanted to present that to you all and see if there was some interest around doing that. And if so, I'd love to have them come back and talk about this more. Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Lili Fernandez here, 11322 for Mona. Last time I stood up here, I was trying to run for Senior Commission, that didn't work out. As we all know, that we have a lack of diversity here in council, in our programs and what we have going on. However, I see everybody doing their own thing. And it benefits each and one of us in our own senses, all the residents and what have you. However, I do see a lot of homeless. I'm here for North Hawthorne, in my area where I live at, besides the point what I just said. So I have seen a lot of vagrants. Not so much homeless families, vagrants, addicts hanging around. And I know, I've heard Dulce's name about 10 times. She's only one person. I don't know who's helping her. I know Chris used to go around the areas and try to look and see who needs help. Is anybody going around looking to see who needs help? Because I see the same people there. Either you see the homeless or the vagrants, they're hanging around. And they're not just hanging around, they're doing things they're not supposed to. Because I see it, I just can't snap a picture of them in front of them. And our safety is being compromised. I do not no longer walk to the liquor store, which is not even half a block away from my house, let alone let my neighbor walk over there. We have to ask the liquor store owner to meet us halfway and we pay him there, you know, like dealers. Because we are afraid. Is anything doing? I know it's not just in North Hawthorne, I'm sure it's in Manetta and in other parts. The police can only do so much. Are there anything, any, I don't know, anything you guys can do to help the police to go ahead and enforce the law for us, the people who live in Hawthorne? The ones that pay the taxes here for everybody? Because what I hear is you guys are the servants, you guys here are working for us. Can we please see a little bit more for us and not just for you? And I don't mean it so direct, but please give us a hand here. Our safety is not the same anymore, especially for the elderly. I give rise to about seven different seniors throughout the week and I'm running myself thin. And I do it on my own time. I don't do it on a nonprofit. So thank you very much. Hear me out.
Last speaker. If there's no one else, I declare oral communications closed order. Madam Clerk, consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor, I have five items on the consent calendar. They're items six through 10 for your consideration and approval. Item six, approval of waiver of full readings of resolutions and ordinances on tonight's agenda. Item 12, I mean, I'm sorry, item seven. City Treasurer requests approval of the warrants for June 11, 2024. Item eight, Resolution Number 8474, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, approving budget allocations for specified elected officials for the 2023-2024 fiscal year. Item nine, Resolution Number 8472, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, providing for the terms and conditions of employment for those employees represented by the Hawthorne Executive Group, HEG, according to the provisions of the Hawthorne Municipal Code, HMC, and authorizing the Chief of Police to execute HEG Memorandum of Understanding, MOU. Item 10, Resolution 8473, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, providing for the terms and conditions of employment of those employees represented by the Hawthorne Municipal Employees Association, HMEA, according to the provisions of the Hawthorne Municipal Code, HMC, and authorizing City Manager to execute the HMEA Memorandum of Understanding for adoption.
I move.
Second.
Please vote.
There is a typo on Resolution Number 8474. It should be fiscal year '24 to '25. And the resolution itself has the correct year. The title just hasn't earned on the agenda.
I move with that interdelineation.
Thank you.
I didn't, what resolution was that?
8474, that's item number eight.
Item eight, thank you.
Please vote.
The votes are in.
Do you have the?
The voter reflects Mayor and Council voting, yes.
Do you have that? Is it popping? It didn't pop up on the screen? Is that you or somebody else? All right, let's have Cable make sure that her screen's popping up on the... Do they have any control? Maybe they can give us some feedback, go ahead. Mr. City Attorney? Her report, is that sufficient without the display?
Yes, that's fine. I think the Madam Clerk has recorded that for the minutes.
But you have to say how everybody voted.
Mayor and Council voting, yes.
Oh, all of them? Okay, comprehensive, okay, thank you. Next, we have our first public hearing. Madam Clerk, item 11, please.
Item 11, now is the time and place for a public hearing and approval of Resolution 8468, approving the annual engineers' report, confirming the assessment diagram and assessment amounts, and authorizing the levying and collection of ass... and authorizing the levy and collection of assessments for improvement of the street lighting system, Landscaping and Street Lighting Act of 1972, for the fiscal year 2004-2025. No written communications were received.
Is there anyone who wants to speak on this item? If not, Madam Clerk, can you please read resolution 8468 into the record?
Resolution 8468, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, approving the annual engineer's report, confirming the assessment diagram and assessment amounts, and authorizing the levy and collection of assessments for improvement of the street lighting system, Landscaping and Street Lighting Act of 1972, for the fiscal year 2024-2025.
I'll move.
The votes are in. The voting reflects Mayor and Council voting yes.
Now is the time and place for a public hearing. That's you should. So let's please read item 12 into the record, ma'am.
Item 12, now is the time and place for a public hearing and approval of resolution number 8469, confirming assessments for fiscal year 2024-2025, weed and waste abatement and authorizing the collection thereof. No communicate, no written communications were received.
Is there anybody who wishes to speak on this item? If not, I'll declare oral communications on this item closed. Can you please read 8469 into the record, ma'am?
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, confirming assessments for fiscal year 2024-2025, weed and waste abatement, and authorizing the collection thereof.
I'll move.
Please vote. Please vote. It's been moved and seconded, moved by Councilwoman Angie Reyes English and seconded by Councilwoman Montero. Please vote, folks.
The votes are in. The voting reflects Mayor and Council voting yes.
Okay. Ms. City Clerk, can you please read items 13 through 20 on behalf of the City Manager?
Item 13, award of contract for Zella Davis Park Improvement Project, number 24-04. Item 14, agreement contract between the City of Hawthorne and Matrix Consulting Group, LTD, for analysis, evaluation, and recommendations related to the city's permitting processes pursuant to the economic development strategic plan. Item 15, progress payment number five in the amount of $151,789.96 due to Classic Engineering and Construction, Inc. of Orange, California, for Hawthorne Housing Rehabilitation of City-owned Properties 2023, project number 23-09. Item 16, progress payment number four in the amount of $1,980,792.38 due to Sequel Contractors of Santa Fe Springs, California, for Northeast Hawthorne Mobility Improvement Project, project number 21-05. Item 17, agreement contract between the City of Hawthorne and Viatron Systems Incorporated for the digitization of planning records. Item 18, the agreement between the City of Hawthorne and West Coast Aviation for the sales, representation, and consultation for the sale of 1988 MD-500E helicopter, Air 55, by the Hawthorne Police Department. Item 19, Third Amendment to Exclusive Agreement between the City of Hawthorne and Red Flex Traffic Systems, Inc., for photo red light enforcement program. Item 20, annual renewal payment of cloud-hosted Tyler Technology Software Enterprise, permitting and licensing, formerly Energy, Intergov, in the amount of $79,425. Mr. Mayor, that concludes the City Manager's consent calendar. May I have a motion to approve items 13 through 20?
I move.
Second.
But the second will go to Councilwoman Angie Reyes. It goes to you. You said it first. Go ahead, please vote.
The votes are in. The voting reflects Mayor and Council voting yes.
Okay, elected officials' reports and recommendations.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to say thank you for coming out and participating in another meeting involving our community. It was good to see everyone. Congratulations to both of the Good Neighbor Award winners. Have a good night. City Clerk.
Well, first of all, I want to thank everyone who came out and lots of great presentations. Want to also thank our wonderful staff here for the Good Neighbors Award, the winners of the Good Neighbors Award. Wanted to also give you all some information I left out in the lobby as well. I'm part of the Community School Advisory Council for Jefferson Elementary, and I left some information there regarding Bright Life Kids. This is like tutoring. It's like a tutoring service. It's online, and it just is something to kind of help people out who are up to 12 years old. And then there's also Saluna, which is mental health coaching for children as well, and this is for ages 13 through 25, but these are free resources. And I did leave the flyers out in the lobby. Wanted to thank everyone who came out to the food drive this past weekend. We gave away approximately 2,000 bags of food. The food drive is once a month. The next food drive will be July 13 at 9:00 a.m., and you will probably see us out here prepping food the day before on the 12th. And I want to thank the American Heart Association for that. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember David Patterson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, want to thank the community for coming out and participating in the process and making your voices heard. We appreciate your feedback and appreciate informing us as to what's important to you so we can we can act on and do something about it. We want to thank our staff for your hard work. Want to thank our police department for your hard work. I appreciate, you know, your contribution to to making our city better. I want to congratulate our Good Neighbor Award winners. We have Kimberly Duran and Adrian Gerardo. Thank you so much for making an impact in our city and just your contribution to the city of Hawthorne. Mr. City Manager, could you have the Theater Truck come out and and address the the city? I'd like to definitely support what they're doing and have Shakespeare in the Park in the city of Hawthorne. Also, I don't know if it's too late for this, but I attended the Contract Cities Conference a couple of weeks ago on behalf of the city of Hawthorne, and I ran into the company, the fireworks company that that does business in the city of Hawthorne. They had a, I like a resolution or ordinance of some sort that allowed for the city to find those that were using illegal fireworks, but also to work with, and I forgot the exact details, but work with the the community as well as non-police officer staff in identifying those offenders and reporting them, right, so that we can find them so we don't have to wait for the police officers to show up and see them in the act, but we can use, I guess, other personnel to help support identifying those bad actors and make sure we can find them. So I don't know if it's too late to to put some, put that together or consider that for this this Fourth of July, but I'll get that over to the City Manager and the City Attorney, and we can kind of see what we can do and of course, bring it to the Council and see what the Council thinks. Yeah, TNT fireworks. And that's really, that's it for me. I appreciate you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilmember Alex Montero.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming and also the listening at home. Thank you for all the presentation, the Good Neighbor Award. Thank you, Ms. Erica, and thank you all the recipients. That is a great opportunity to demonstrate our staff, you know, what they do every day. So thank you very much. I want to, I want to address a little bit what Ms. Lili Fernandez mentioned about the homeless on Imperial. So for us, you know, the citizens of Hawthorne, we need to start calling the county of LA, especially our supervisor, Holly Mitchell, and the LASA, the Homeless Authority in LA County, because they're the one who put some of the homeless individuals in that motel on Imperial Highway, without notifying the city. Okay? And that is why we seeing some of those individual hanging out on Imperial Highway, and I saw some of them even the other day, right at the Pollo Loco parking lot. And it's the fact that those people is coming to that motel, and instead of staying inside waiting to be transitioned to permanent housing, they've been roaming around our city. So that's that's the problem there, that we didn't create, but the county did create that for us because, you know, we are part of LA County, we are part of ADH cities, right? So that is why those frequent is over there. It's not because Hawthorne is not doing their job. We are doing our part. We have created homeless program that didn't exist before. We have created those tiny homes that didn't exist before. We have brought homeless coordinator and more staff to deal with the homeless issue, and we are doing our part. So if you see people on Imperial Highway, especially those homeless people there, call your county supervisor, Holly Mitchell's office, because it's not us. So we're doing our part. So thank you, and believe me, our police department, our city manager, our public works, our community service is doing the best job for those individual. And that is where I recommending also that the telehealth event is helping our homeless at the tiny homes, at the behavioral health service, giving them the support that that they need. And we need to continue to provide these services because if we don't do, we will be accused of doing nothing. And that is why we have to say, you know, sometime we need to spend some dollar to give people a decent life, a different opportunity for them to succeed in lives. And that's what we see that for us, our tiny homes have transitioned about 59 people to permanent housing. So we're doing our part. Okay? So again, I want to say thank you to all of you, and education first is very important to to give scholarship to students. Like I mentioned, you know, my nonprofits from Monita Gardens to Hawthorne Presenting Council, we gave about six scholarships last week to Hawthorne, Hawthorne High, Hawthorne Math and Science Academy, Losinger High School, et cetera, et cetera. So it's very important for that, so I do support them, and I would ask for us to maybe to put the education first on the list of of our giving as a as an organization there, please. I want to give a directive because, again, we've been lacking of corn of some of the commissioners, especially the planning department, all the planning commissions that have not been having meetings because we lack of corn. So I want to say if any project that needs approval, bypass the planning commission and come to the City Council, because we cannot be putting those projects on hold because we don't have a corn on the planning commission. So we need those projects to move forward, so please bring to the City Council for approval. And that's it for me, Mr. Mayor, and good night, and God bless.
Thank you. Councilwoman Angie Reyes English.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me just first of all acknowledge all the events that took place in Hawthorne, and I just want to give kudos to our Hawthorne Police and Firefighter of the Year luncheon that was given by the Hawthorne Lennox, Lennox Rotary Hawthorne Lennox, LAX, excuse me, and most importantly, our Kiwanis Club of Hawthorne. So thank you greatly to all our sponsors and all of those that made it possible, and more importantly, congratulations to our own Hawthorne Police Officers and our LA County Fire. The same would go for the 48th Annual South Bay Medal of Valor. Congratulations, chief, to you in your leadership, and more importantly, to those that were honored at the event on May 23rd. I'd like to just say thank you to Diana from Boys and Girls Club. As most folks know, that we are now partnering with the Boys and Girls Club of Carson, so it's a Hawthorne-Carson partnership, and look forward to providing services to our youth here in the city of Hawthorne. Thank you, Diana, and thank you, City Manager Vaughn, for your leadership in that. I'd like to congratulate all those nonprofit organizations that received their spot with regards to our upcoming fireworks stands. Congratulations to you. I hope I hope that this year we we really, you know, pay attention to our safe and sane, but more importantly, be vigilant when it comes to our fireworks here in the city of Hawthorne. Still an important issue to address when it comes to the safety of our community and especially families. It's quite often the following day is when you hear all the tragedies that take place due to negligence, so let's just be aware, safe firework usage, please. I want to also acknowledge our chief, Gary Tomatani, who's going to be speaking on June 12 at lecture series at our Hawthorne Historic Society, and that's going to be on June 12 at 6:00 p.m. Look forward to hearing the chief and his department's programs and innovative ideas to improve our public safety services. And yeah, that's tomorrow. And thank you also to Councilmember Montero on his Juneteenth celebration, that's Saturday, June 22nd, 11 to 4. Thank you to the committee that's helping create all of this event, and you know who you are, there's lots of you there, that brought Juneteenth Celebration at the Hawthorne Memorial Park, and that's going to be from 11 to 4 on the June 22nd, Saturday, June 22nd. Look forward to seeing you all participate in that. There's some great events coming out from the city of Hawthorne, you know, services, community services, the summer sports camps, they have Zumba classes, they have self-defense classes, and we also have the Farmer's Market Senior Trip, which is Friday, July 26 from 10 to 3. So all of these great events are coming up and including your upcoming, I don't know, Mayor Pro Tem, your concert series, so I'll let you talk a little bit maybe more about that. But I also, too, would like to make mention of a few, a few initial nonprofit organizations to add to the list for potential giving, and that's, you know, Education First, our Boys and Girls Club, Hawthorne-Carson, and our Fair Housing Foundation. Again, we rely on Fair Housing Foundation to assist us with constituents that call us and are asking for assistance when it comes to housing rights and what their rights are, and we refer a lot of folks over to them, and they host events here at City Hall to take in those constituents. And, you know, quite often, they're not all Hawthorne constituents, so people will go where services are and where they need them at that time. So they're not waiting at any given time for services based off of where they live. They're going to go where they see it advertised, where it's being offered. So my segue into that is with regards to telehealth.
Quiet. Hold on just one. We need to quiet out of the audience, please, even if you disagree, okay? Just let's give everybody.
With regards to telehealth services, it has very, it's been very instrumental, and it's helped us a lot. And Councilmember is correct, we've never had these types of services offered in the city of Hawthorne. It's been oftentimes a hush-hush thing. However, we as constituents and those that are responding to constituents and businesses are the are the ones that are receiving at the end of the day calls with regards to homeless individuals and individuals that are either sleeping on their doorstep at their business when they open up in the mornings, they're in the alleys, they're on the sidewalks, and yes, with that comes other things that is intolerable, which is, you know, defecation, urination, which I agree, it's despicable, and it's something that we shouldn't have to face. And unless we provide services to address that, such as pellet shelter housing, mental health, behavioral health services, programs, referrals, wraparound services, anything to address these types of behaviors, it needs to be done because without it, it's not going to help us, and code enforcement is not going to help us with that either. Code enforcement has its task of what it needs to do, and behavioral health and those types of other wraparound services has their their things that they need to do, especially when it comes to social workers and licensed social workers, clinicians, and other emergency response personnel. And the police has been very instrumental, too. However, oftentimes, police have to refer these individuals to the professionals that handle those types of of concerns. So having said that, I support telehealth. I agree with telehealth. We've been very fortunate to have Harper monies and other monies that can go to provide We've been very fortunate to have, have Harper monies and other monies that can go to provide for services. I'd like to provide an additional two-year extension. There are services that have increased in pricing with a 20% increase to that rates. And I'd like to, to come back for approval. I want to also want to bring Dulce back to city council. I want Dulce to come back to city council and give us a report out on the things that she's seeing and the assistance that she's requesting. And I want to make sure that we're helping in those efforts. Having said that, there's a lot of social, there's a lot of social, how should I say it? Concerns and issues that are things that are not necessarily a, a, an interesting topic for folks to, to like or have to support. But at the end of the day, in, in the work that I've done and the things that I've seen, without it, we're not successful. We're not successful. We can't do it all on our, on our own. That's a kind of, we oftentimes need to reach out to other individuals, other services, nonprofit organizations. And the story with regards to the LAX Hotel is Mayor Bass was and is inquiring hotels to house homeless individuals. And without our knowing, LAX Hotel was inquired and individuals replaced. Without our knowledge and without our, our, you know, approval. At the end of the day, that's a personal transaction that took place. It has nothing to do with the city. However, just like anyone else, they're looking for housing the unhoused. So again, it's sometimes not a, a topic that's favorable for, for most. But at the end of the day, as public servants, we have to find resources. We need to be able to use discretion and we need to be able to partner with the things that are going to be needed to address those issues. So having said that, Vaughn, I hope that you could help us and just engage with regards to additional dollars from Harper monies, any monies that are available to us that we have yet to spend. I know we're coming up on a timeline when it comes to monies that we're being used, being used during COVID, you know, 26, 27. I think we have what till 2027 or something like this? Yeah. So believe it or not, that's, that's among us, is coming pretty quickly. I'd like to thank our Public Works Department with all the improvements that are being made on the north side of Hawthorne, all the street paving, all the things that are being done to address the, the curves to the ramps, to the sidewalks. I know we're not finished yet. There's still some things that need to get, get fixed and finalized. But it looks like for the most part, residents are reading the signs, are moving their cars, are complying and doing what they need to do so that we can get our streets looking good. We have a long ways to go. I look forward to additional monies that we're going to be receiving through grant fundings and those that are in the pipelines. We're working hard with regards to our new city hall and what that looks like and how soon we're going to break ground with regards to the parking lot, which is going to be underground parking. I look forward to the senior center and what our seniors look forward to in a new senior facility. And I just want to acknowledge some of the residents that have called me on a number of other issues from park enforcement to the street paving, to concerns with regards to already fireworks starting, with regards to, you know, still homeless individuals that at the end of the day, we can't control when it comes to making directives such as, you know, removing people, making people leave. If they're not breaking the law, there's nothing we could do about that. All we could do is reach out to them, ask if they want services, ask if they want housing and bring them in. But to go around and tell people that, you know, they need to move just because, you know, they're unhoused or, you know, they, they, they have a potential, you know, looking a certain way, that's, and that's something we can't do. However, we need to stay vigilant, we need to be aware. There are individuals that are, that I've seen that are breaking in into the Hawthorne Mall, which is still an eyesore for me personally. I live right down the street from the mall. I see it regularly when I'm coming through the parking lot of the grocery store on 126. I see it all the time. And if it's, if I see something that is breaking the law or is something that is, you know, disturbing a business or breaking into a business or trying to gain access to something that's closed and there's no permitted entry, that definitely is something that I could report, I will report and I have reported it. So again, I appreciate the concerns, I appreciate the comments. I appreciate you coming in, whoever you feel you need to address this to, whether it's the council, the city manager or the police department. That's good that you're doing that. But to say that we're not, you know, going to continue to address the concerns of mental health, behavioral health and homeless needs, you know, I beg the differ on that. So again, thank you for a great night. Thank you for coming out and being a part of our city. Thank you to our honorees, good, good neighbor honorees. And thank you to our staff that sits in the back quietly watching, observing, listening for what you're doing and how you work hard each and every day on bringing us policy, legislation, language and things that makes sense to the residents of Hawthorne. And that's something I want to continue to, I'm going to continue to champion. So thank you all, appreciate it. Have a good night.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Manning.
Can you hear me? Okay, thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to start off by saying Happy Father's Day. It's coming up this weekend. So Happy Father's Day to all the fathers. We didn't have Father's Day celebration this, this time around, but I definitely want to take the time to say, we appreciate all the hard work you all do. And keep up the good work and we'll see you next year. Happy Father's Day. Also, I'd like to say I appreciate the telehealth work presentation. I echo my colleagues in regards to the work that is being done. We have to continue to do more work as it regards to our homeless population. And there's not one thing that's going to be able to solve it. It needs to be a collective body of work from all departments for us to deal with our mental health and our homeless. They go hand in hand. And so the work that telehealth is doing, we do appreciate. And we do appreciate our staff and the work that they're doing, as well as our police department and everybody else that is contributing to the homeless population and the mental health issues that we're having. Also, I'd like to say I'm proud of our chief and the work that he continues to do. He's always a rock star. Every time I turn around, there's something that's going on where the city of Hawthorne is being notarized for the work that his leadership is continuing to move forward. So chief, you're a rock star over there. I appreciate you and I'm sure the rest of the staff do as well. So congratulations and I look forward to seeing you continuing to be a rock star. And the fireworks, when they go off, just think about the rock star song. Also, I'd like to say congratulations to our awardees. We appreciate you and it's people like you that make Hawthorne the place where we grow and we thrive. So keep up the good work. Also, I'd like to give directives to our city manager. Recently, we had a power outage and I believe it was eight hours. At least it was eight hours for me and it's not acceptable. And not only was I unable to work, but my groceries, my refrigerator was out and so my food spoiled. And so this is just not acceptable. So city manager, I'd like for you to look into asking Edison for some type of incentive program where our residents could get a discount for either a solar panel or a generator so that when our lights go out, we can refer to either that solar panel or that generator so that we cannot be out of work all day long or our food rot. And sometimes people can't afford to go back and buy the food that they've lost because of the power outage. And it's been a lot lately. But when that bill is due, they want their money. So I don't think it's fair that they could just do this to us and there's not some type of repercussion. So if you could please look into that, I greatly appreciate that. Also, I've been getting complaints regarding the street and the potholes. So if you could look into having a potholes repaired on Venice, Elsa Gundo to 120th. The complaints are becoming more increasingly. And so I appreciate if you can look into that. And then my last thing is if you could please look into bringing a subject matter expert for potentially managing our future assets. Thank you. Happy Father's Day.
Awesome. One more go backs? Okay. You guys laughing, you guys know when I say that, right? All of a sudden, somebody pops up in the middle of the stuff.
Back now, thank you for reminding me of my go back.
That's fine, I just don't want to be.
Hey Ryan, give me a favor, ask the theater individual to send a proposal to Vaughn, please, for the three weekends or the five days. So Holly Park Theater proposal to Vaughn. Thank you. And then I have another.
Just kidding.
Oh, you're being a brat with that one, that one you were doing. At least we can giggle a little bit at the end of the night, right? Okay, well, this is probably one of the quickest meetings we've had. So I guess we got down to business. So it is possible to have an efficient meeting. So I, I really like that. I wanted to start off by mentioning the concerts in the park that we're going to have. The concerts in the park are from 5 to, 5 to 8:00 PM, we'll have the band. So once you, they're going to be on Fridays. Other cities have them on Wednesdays, on Thursdays, on Saturdays. We're going to have hours on Friday from 5 to 8. So when you get out of work, this is the way you can start off your weekend, right? Coming out and listening to some music, okay? So, but immediately following the movie, I mean, the concert, we're going to have movies in the park follow right away. Okay, so this is a good way on bringing your children, your families, yourselves to be able to see two things at once, okay? A two-in-one type of event. July 12th, July 19th and July 26th. On July 12th, we're going to have an 80's music band, 80's pop. So from what I see right here, we're going to have them interpreting Michael Jackson, some Whitney Houston, some Duran Duran, some of the 80's new wave fun stuff. Well, I like Duran Duran, I'm going to request someone, I'm going to make sure they come ready for that, right? So Durant, I am, oh, you know what? I was born in 71, okay? So everybody knows that, come on, guys. So it's going to be 80's music on the first day, July 12th. On July 19th, we're going to have a disco funk band. So that's, that, that's going to be pretty cool, right? Some OJ, some, what, like what else? Like some disco Casey and the Sunshine Band, like stuff like, it's going to be fun. Just come out, check it out. And then on July 26th, we're going to end the series with a Selena cover band. So that one should be really cool. It's, it's supposed to be a really good Selena cover band as well. So please come and join us. Movies on July 12th, Migration, July 19th, Kung Fu Panda 4. Wow, they got a fourth one. And on July 26th, Trolls Band Together. Oh wow, some, these are some of my favorites. Looking forward to seeing them. So just come out, please come out on those days, help support. Get some of your neighbors to come out. Everybody's, oh, we don't have these events. We have these events right now, this summer, all right? You can't complain if you don't participate. Let's get some of the people from the other side of the freeway as well to come over here and so forth. So let's recruit, bring your friends, right? You know what I'm talking about, everybody needs to come out, okay? Don't complain later on that we don't have, we, this is what we're doing for you because responding to the community. And all my council colleagues are doing, are pushing for events that will help bring people out. This summer is going to be pretty cool, right? Don't they have like the Olympics coming up? Okay, so, and in 2028, we're going to have the Olympics here in the LA area as well. So I had some notes here. All right. Addressing the issue of the homeless along Imperial Highway and throughout the city, it's very important that we do, we do explain what's been going on with that hotel. And it's not that we came up with the idea, that's the reality, reality of it. My colleagues over here explained some of that. Sometimes we agree on stuff, but 95% of the time, we agree on, disagree. 5% and 95% of the time, we agree on stuff and that's the truth. The LAX Hotel was acquired by the county, not City of Los Angeles, not Karen Bass, but through Holly Mitchell's office and the five board of supervisors. Not just her office, but a board of five, five ladies voted for this on the board of supervisors to be able to purchase certain properties, hotels, to be able to house homeless individuals, okay? Of course, was I concerned just like you guys were? Yes, as to what could happen, okay? So one of the things I did do was contact our supervisor's office to make sure that they would be responsible and see what kind of vetting process would happen and what kind of safeguards they would have in order to make sure that the communities are safe. Okay, so that's the first thing I did. And we were assured that these individuals were vetted, that they would be transitioned into permanent housing as soon as possible. So I understand the community's concerns, seeing the individuals walking around the community, et cetera. The second thing I did was contact our chief of police with regards to making sure that we keep a tally, ask to anything, any crimes, any violations or anything that's committed by individuals who come from that location. So that if what you're saying, what everybody here is saying is correct, that we have some information and data that shows that it's individuals from these locations that are causing stuff. But so far, we don't have any impending or any like, we don't have anything that shows us that that's the case, okay? Be vigilant, of course. So continue to, if you see something, please call it in, have our police go out there, take a record of some, of what's happening. And if somebody breaks the law, they should be arrested, bottom line, okay? Does that sound good, chief? That's the feedback that I got from, so yes, we're concerned, we're keeping an eye out. We're confident that this program will work out and that there won't be any problems. But we share your concern, everybody on the council. Also, one thing that I disagree with some of my colleagues up here, but I think we can do things to be able to enforce the law. I think we should. My commitment is to you, the residents of Hawthorne, making sure you guys are safe. Just like you or I would get in trouble for doing something in public that's offensive to people, you know, and we would be arrested. The laws should be applied equally to those individuals that are out there that are unhoused or homeless or whatever. I mean, we've had complaints about blocking of the right of way. If you're over there laid out in the middle of the sidewalk, what's going to happen to you? If you don't move, what's going to happen to you? You're going to get a ticket, you might get arrested. The law should be applied equally to those people who are doing that, okay? Whether they're homeless or not. People who defecate in public or urinate in public, we've seen that. The law should be, applies to you, the law should apply to them as well. Exposing themselves, going into people's lawns and using the hoses to, to wash up. They're naked, kids are running around in the neighborhood. If you did it or I did it, we would be arrested. The law should be applied to those individuals as well. Harassing, harassment of children and women that has taken place, these are reports. Not everyone, okay, not everyone, but it has taken place. You would be arrested, you would be fined for something, the law should apply to everybody out there. So I want to make sure that our police department understands from my perspective that we should enforce the law. I would hope that we have a collective effort up here that pushes for that because my obligation is to keep Hawthorne residents safe. As part of that, I also wanted to note, one of the things that's important to me is that the number of nonprofits in the city here is super high. I do agree, but, and that's why I've pushed for making sure that we vet the nonprofits that are asking for city. that are asking for city money. I've said that public, and I've said it many times. So if we're giving away city money, what are we giving city money away for, to the nonprofits? The purpose of that is to serve who? Hawthorne residents, not residents from outside of the city. Hawthorne residents come from, that's my obligation to serve, and serve the residents of the city of Hawthorne. If some of these programs are not serving Hawthorne residents, then why should we support them, okay? That's why I've been pushing a lot for, what are the numbers? Do you show ID when you come and pick up some groceries? Do we have a tally as to who, are we vetting these people who are coming, or giving away the stuff, right? But at least know what the numbers look like. Do we have data that tells us how many of the individuals going to the telehealth van are from the city of Hawthorne? How many people were former, were housed here in the city of Hawthorne that lost their homes? Do we have those numbers? Are these services drawing people from the outside to the city of Hawthorne because we're becoming a point of service for tons of people where they can come and get a free meal, maybe, some free housing, some free groceries, et cetera? My obligation is to the Hawthorne residents, and I think we just need to be a little bit more careful about that. Prove me wrong, let's see the data. Maybe I'm fully wrong, I'm not assuming, I want to get the data so we can know exactly what's happening. Because I refuse to believe and accept, like some of my counterparts, that we are a low-income city, perpetuating that theme, that we're a low-income city, and hearing it from people up here on the city council is what does not allow us to get these higher-end restaurants. That's why we still have to go down to Torrance, we still have to go to Manhattan Beach. You keep hearing about it over and over and over, okay? So we got to stop, you know, we just got to stop thinking with that mentality, especially with so many young engineers from SpaceX buying up homes and living here in the area. Okay, so we have to start thinking, we have to promote ourselves and elevate ourselves and not keep ourselves low. I do join my council colleagues in having these services and having these nonprofits, but I also want some accountability that I think we could do better with, is all I'm saying, okay, guys? So that's it. Hoping you all have a good weekend, Happy Father's Day to all the parents out there, the fathers in particular this time, we had Mother's Day recently, and so we hope you have a good, enjoyable weekend, and so...
Mr. Mayor, can I have a directive? I forgot to give a directive to staff.
Okay, look, we got to just stop doing these last-minute things, okay? I'm going to recess the meeting now. So the meeting is, that's why I did ask for people to begin to give any go-bags or just take care of everything within their allotted time. So this meeting is adjourned now, have a good weekend, week and weekend, this meeting is adjourned at 7:50.